Call a meeting to order.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the breathing justice for all.
Thank you. I would like, this summer's been hard for a lot of folks, and I'd like to take a moment of silence for the following families. For Leroy Broke's family with the loss of their wife and their mother, Debbie. From our fire department, the family of Tara Luck, who was a contributing member, lifetime member of the fire department. To the Glass family for the loss of their granddaughter and family members. For the John Patterson family for the loss of their daughter. And we are saddened by these unfortunate losses of lives. Let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. Begin with roll call.
Anthony Lipsanski.
Here.
We had a pensive. Uh, Kenneth Hall.
Present.
Bonnie Almond.
Here.
Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ronald Glassick.
Here.
Judith Alderman.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Jason Donahue.
Here.
Mason Smallneck.
Here.
Uh, Julia Kutzler.
Here.
Mayor Anthony Christash.
Present.
Thank you.
Did we account for our?
Mason.
Okay, nope. I didn't hear it.
He's the guy that reads all the reports if you guys miss it. Thank you. Next we move on to hearing a person's present.
Wait a minute.
Pardon?
Minutes.
Uh, missed that, did I? The approval of minutes of the public workshop meeting held on August 3rd, and the regular public meeting held on August 17th. Have you got a motion?
Let it be written.
Was that Mr. Lipsanski?
Yes.
How about a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Stone? Any discussion or question on these minutes?
Is that for both meetings, the 3rd and the 17th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? You always have it. It wouldn't be a council meeting if I didn't do something.
You got that I was aware of.
Hearing a person's present. For the president's report, uh, I have nothing at this time. Mayor's report?
Thank you very much. It was nice to hear from our public works supervisor, Mr. Maury, and the fine work that the public works department is doing. Uh, I know we talk about the D and L trail in our parks a lot. Uh, just down there yesterday, and observing how beautiful the Monarch Butterfly Garden has come in, and what a great start that is to beautifying the park. It was also nice to hear from our engineer, from Michael Baker, about the progress we're making with what will be the welcome center, and the parking lot across from the gazebo. Uh, it would be the D and L trail oasis that we've waited for a long time, and it would give a little more prominence to the borough and the fact that we have a lot of businesses that can benefit from people taking a rest on the trail and learning what they can, how they can travel around Northampton, eat, drink, and just refuel while they're on the trail. So, uh, it's good to get that started, to know that it's in concrete and we're going from there. Uh, my apologies for the delay in the Riverfront Garden. Uh, numerous, uh, events and things have happened. Not making excuses, uh, we are moving forward with that in the very near future also. So you will see progress down there. And again, uh, just conversations I've had, at least with two of the council people up here, about ideas they have, which I hope to push them onto the stage to announce them. There's so much pride in what we do here in the town, and the ideas that we have and they have to enhance the quality of life here. It, it really makes me happy to know that they're thinking about the community as, I'm sure all of you are. So I encourage you, bring those ideas forward time to time again, because you look at what the calendar looks like during the year. We have the Halloween parade coming up, which is one of the oldest in the Lehigh Valley, and I know we're very proud of that. And from there, the tree lighting and other things along the way. So bringing those ideas forward, and, uh, like I said, I hope to push those two ideas. Uh, you council people know who you are, so, uh, we'll go from there. But thank you very much for the time, Council President. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Smithson, do your report, please.
Uh, just prior to the, uh, meeting today, we had an executive session, and that executive session concerned personnel matters. Uh, other than that, I would just ask the members of council if there are any questions. Hearing none. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Moving, moving on to reports from committees. Administered, administration and finance, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. The estimated fuel allocation for 2024 was $291,612.43. This is based on the mileage of 33.81 and the population of 10,0395. The fall newsletter, the fall borough newsletter will be printed in color and available for, at the borough office. The newsletter will also be available on the borough website and the Northampton Borough, and northanthamborough.com. End of report.
Thank you. Building Land and Recreation, J. H.
Thank you. Thank you. After another successful season, the Northampton Farmers Market will host its last day on Tuesday, September 26th, next Tuesday. That will be their last day. If anyone would like to participate in the annual Jack Frost Parade on October 19th, please contact Judy Ackerman. Uh, her phone number is 610-261-3509. And the 34th Annual Street Fair was held on Sa- Saturday, September 9th, and it was a great success. Thank you to the chamber for hosting the event, this event, year after year. End of report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Code and Police, Mr. Stone.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Chief Kadingo reports that 27 child IDs were distributed at the Uptown Street Fair. Uh, special thanks to the police department and their dedication to the community. Uh, we received a code enforcement and rental income report for August, and it looks like there's still a few concerns that are open, but many are closed. Uh, code enforcement is doing a great job. Uh, also for the Northampton Borough Police Department, uh, report for August, we had 633 dispatches, 171 incident reports filed, and accident investigations completed, 18. Uh, end of report.
Thank you. Was there any data on the code report?
I just briefly reviewed.
What's in your packet?
That there were still some, some open, many are closed. I did record on that.
No, no, no.
I didn't give specific numbers, nothing?
Uh, no, no, for the code report.
Yes, I did.
You gave that.
I didn't give specific numbers, but I did, I knew that there were still a few open, many are closed.
Thank you. Um.
End of report.
Thank you. Fire and Health, Mrs. Almond.
Thank you. Health Officer Ted Verisink has completed several health inspections throughout the borough. All have passed with flying colors. End of report.
Thank you. Public Works, Mr. Glassick.
Thank you, sorry. Um, recently the Public Works Department finished repair, uh, repairs and repaving of the 26th Street Basketball Court. The end of the report.
Okay. Unfinished business? We have none? Underdue business? Consider requests for the handicap parking space.
A resident in the area of 726 Dewey Avenue is requesting a handicap parking space in the front of the house. Chief Kadingo recommends approval of the handicap parking space.
Make a motion to follow the chief's direction and approve it.
Second.
Who does the second? Almond?
Here.
Question? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You always have it. Consider requests for stop sign?
Uh, we've received a request for a stop sign to be placed in Line Alley at, actually it's Lawrence Court. Uh, it is understood that this is a troubled spot for residents traveling north on Line Alley. Uh, I had spoken to the chief about this, and, uh, he went up and took a look at it, and it might be wise to have his input before we move. Brian?
Uh, if you don't know that it's necessary, um, I, uh, we table this, let me give it a couple of checks, rather than just a cursory overview that I took of the situation.
I was.
I think there are a lot of stop signs in the alleys a lot, because there are rules that are in Pennsylvania Motor Vehicle Code that govern that conduct.
I, I was going to suggest that we table this and give him an opportunity to make a more thorough study. Uh, I didn't have an opportunity, being off, uh, to discuss this with him until this beginning of this week. And, uh, I'm not saying it's not necessary, but, you know, before we go and put it up, I think it would be good to have his input.
Is everybody okay with tabling this?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay.
We need a motion and a second, and then a vote.
Okay, we need a motion.
Make a motion to table it.
Second.
Motion by Glassick, second by J. H., because I mess up, so she's forever J. H. now. Ms. Holdeman?
And Leroy, just a question?
Yes.
You said it's called Center Court?
No.
Lawrence Court. Lawrence Court, okay, thank you.
The first alley that runs perpendicular to Main Street coming south from 24th is Cement Court. The one where this gentleman is requesting the stop sign is Lawrence Court, and then the next one is 23rd Street.
And what ward is that?
First Ward.
First Ward, thank you. That's all my questions.
Anyone else have questions? All those in favor for tabling this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You always have it. Number three, consider request of St. Paul's United Church of Christ.
St. Paul's UCC will be hosting their annual trunk or treat on Sunday, October 29th, 2023. They're requesting permission to close one block, one block portion of 19th Street that runs between the church, uh, church building and the annexed property from 1:00 to 4:00 P. M. This would include Ridge Alley to Lincoln Avenue on 19th Street. They have done this in the past.
Make that motion.
Make a motion of Mr. Hall. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stone. Any questions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
I understand it.
Oh, you have state. You a member of that church?
I am.
Okay.
What time did it start, Council President?
Pardon?
What time did that start? 1:00.
1:00.
1:04. 1:04.
1:04.
They have a nice little shindig up there.
Um, it just says about, uh, closing, or street closing signs, would those be provided to them then?
Pardon?
It says in, uh, if permission is granted, how do we go about obtaining street closing signs? Would those be provided to them?
Uh, we'll provide a letter to the Public Works Department, and they'll take barricades up there.
Oh, okay.
They'll set them up. Yeah, we provide the barricades, they set them up and take them down when they're gone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're gonna have to use your outdoor voice.
With a microphone.
He's keeping on his nose.
Thank you. Number four, consider the request to conduct the Equinox Music and Arts Festival.
Uh, if you recall, the organizers of the, uh, Equinox Music and Arts Festival had originally applied to use the municipal park, both pavilions and the ban shelf, uh, for the autumnal equinox. Uh, they, uh, had some scheduling issues, and they are now asking that that be, uh, instead of having it for fall, they would like to have it on March 19th for the beginning of spring, at the vernal equinox.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Lipsanski. Do I have a second?
I'll make the second just because I want to go right to questions, if you don't mind, please.
Okay. Second made by Ms. Holdeman. Any questions?
Question. We, we asked last time about the vendor lists, and, and just because they're completely new to us and we know nothing. I know the gentleman was here, still here. So you did not provide those yet. Are we gonna get a list of, of that just, um, just for our perusal?
Yeah, absolutely. I can get a list. It was just hard to get people to commit in the timeframe that, for what it was approved until the actual event was being held.
Sure.
So now we have more time, we can get a better idea of who can actually come and dedicate to events.
And I think we had a question about, um, band setup and, um, kind of responsibility for cleanup. Um, you'll be making sure that everything, kind of trash is put in the appropriate vessels for that, and?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, no need to worry about that.
I think your detail is better too, if I may interject here.
Absolutely, please, go right ahead.
But at the same time, your last drawing was submitted, which was more detailed than I thought, but there were some things that, you're not gonna be able to have a food truck down here by our gas tanks and things like that.
Right.
Uh, and that was on there. So when you do that, even though I thought it was very detailed, you need to make some adjustments, and I would advise to, you know, be in contact with borough manager about some of those things. If you're familiar, we have a generator station, and you had a food truck in front of that, so we did have a conver- conversation. We want to move forward, please. I think that's our best interest, but we need to know more details about it, and, you know, understand what, what we're inviting into the borough.
Yeah.
So that's just more or less. So, and I appreciate you coming here again and being here, because normally we don't have this kind of conversation.
Correct.
So thank you for answering the questions.
Chief Kadingo.
I won't, I won't let them do anything inappropriate.
Chief Kadingo, what concerns do you have about the security that day for the event?
I, I mean, I really don't know anything about it, other than what I heard council means, so, uh, possibly, you have a figure from past events, like the number of people that may attend, or, do you have anything like that?
No, honestly, this is my first event I've ever planned.
Have you been to one similar that gave the idea? Would you have any input on what kind of attendance we would have?
I mean, as far as, like, what the collective of people involved know, it would be maybe like a couple hundred, not anything crazy, but, I mean, we would like to advertise for the town, like, for the citizens to come see it, like, people we don't know. There's people driving by that see a sign for, you know, a free event. People, people like all the free stuff, so.
Yeah.
Are you going to have any security there?
Well, that's kind of a reason why I'm here, other than to ask permission, like, maybe, like, might you get some help from you guys? On that end?
Well, the, the problem becomes what the amount of help would be directly related to the number of attendees, you know what I mean? Like, because we are, and I'm not, I don't know about how I feel about taxpayer money to, you know, to bring officers out on overtime for basically an event at a park like that, you know? Uh, but I would, maybe what I would say is if we could, if you could come in and maybe you and Leroy could sit down and discuss it, something like that.
Yeah, or.
Might be better.
Even if you'd be more comfortable, like, or I don't know, would be less comfortable, but like, if we had people ourselves coming through security, but that's, that would be, uh, obviously a tall view, but.
I would be okay with that, uh, especially people that have, that can call us, you understand? Somebody that, it's more important that you have people to monitor events than actually go hands-on.
Yeah.
But I, like I said, if you bring, uh, them one day, and we can meet with Leroy and go over the, you know, that part of it.
Yeah.
And I think you would be wise to reach out to the chamber, because I think the chamber just had our street fair, and they also bring security because of alcohol and stuff like that on there. So they have, there's outside security. Is there any alcohol at your event?
No.
No alcohol? Okay, all right. Good to know that.
And even the, the food truck situation, it's not essentially necessary. I just, the, I'm not from this town.
Pomerton.
My friend, yeah, my friend that is also in my band is from this town, um, so I don't know if you guys would know what convenience about to put them, or we can cut off the food trucks a little bit?
Well, no, the food truck up in the, in the park would be great. It's just that you couldn't go by a generator where they need access to if there's something to go on with it.
Right, but like, would you recommend they park in the street, or can they go on the grass?
They can go on the grass.
They can go on the grass.
Yeah.
You could talk to the chief when you speak with them, and you can give a layout of the types of trucks, how many trucks, which is what and what is where.
Okay.
And then get with our road foreman, and he can, he can clear everything up.
Yeah, food trucks will definitely accentuate the festival by far.
That will, that will bring people.
Yeah.
And you, we can get you a list of those through the chamber. Uh, they have food truck days at Coca-Cola Park where you can get to shake hands with.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great. I appreciate it.
Judy, one more question.
I, you got it.
Okay, go ahead.
Me too was gonna ask, um, where you might have set up prior to this one, but I heard you say this is your first event. So along with the vendor list, I would be interested to see the detailed merchandise that is planning to be sold from those vendors.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, not, you know, down to the nitty gritty, but like the main items at least.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what we're.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Parking would be another question, especially you're saying several hundred people. Is that, do we have enough community park? Several.
We have more than that.
They wouldn't be for community days.
Much more than that.
But they tend to go to like the water authority, the rec center, things like that, and wouldn't that have to be approved by someone?
We'll put, we'll put them on alert.
You put them on alert, okay.
Thank you.
I got one. And what's the date again?
Does that supersede, like, when does the rental fee start for other parks? Does that supersede that? Uh, something like this, or, so I'm saying, you know, you can't.
Well, on a special, a special event like this, council can set the date aside. March 19th is early.
I'm not sure they're knocking the doors down to have the pavilions.
No, they're, no.
Or any other kinds of events in March.
I don't think that will be a, a conflict.
I just want it out there.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? You always have it.
I, I do have a question.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh. We're moving on, come on.
Would we be able to add access to the bathrooms, or would we have to provide?
No.
Uh.
There's bathrooms.
Depends what kind of winter we have. You know, if we can get, if we're, if we're still predicting freezing weather, those bathrooms are not heated.
Right.
So we'll have to address that when we get closer to the date. You may need to get some porta-potties in there. We will try to get the bathrooms open and serviceable.
Wait, we, we do have a trailer, go ahead.
We do have.
That's right, if you got a portable toilet.
Which is what, and air conditioning. They requested Ron.
Come on.
To be used, so you would have that available to you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen.
Depending on the, the weather.
Okay.
When, when we have our sit-down, we can go over all the details.
We have a state of the art, we have a stainless steel, state-of-the-art one.
Yep.
And he's our advisor.
Consider the request.
And it's warm.
Of the Borough of Copley.
Okay. Borough of Copley is requesting their Thamborough Fire Police assistance for their Halloween parade on October 17th, 2023. This has been probably the fourth or fifth year. Uh, this is dependent on availability of the fire police. The captain is here, he can speak to it.
We will, I already have some members who hang out with, uh, Copley has one fire police officer, so we work together as it is. Uh, no, I have some who were already asked me if it was, I told them it was on the agenda for tonight. Uh, it's probably the first of maybe a couple parades that were asked for, but, yeah, as long as I can do it safely, which we will be able to, we'll be good.
What is the wish of the council? Motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Stone, Glassick. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Consider the request of the Northampton Recreation Center and N. A. A. Cheerleading.
The, uh, Northham Recreation Center and N. A. A. Cheerleading are requesting assistance of the Northham Borough Fire Police on Saturday, October 21st, from 3:00 P. M. to 7:00 P. M. To help with traffic control and parking during their cheerleader showcase, which will be held at the recreation center, depending on the availability of the fire police.
Likewise, uh, there, my group isn't aware of this one yet, but we did it last year. Um, we, we should be good. I did speak with him at the rec center, and, uh, I'll bring it to our next meeting, and we should be good. If, if we can't, we'll let him know, work with him on it. But we did it last year, it's, it's fine. It's nowhere near as long as the cheerleading event that they used to have, and it was always on the same day as the marathon. And, yeah, stretching, stretching people all kinds of ways, so we should be good.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion to.
Motion.
Mr. Lipsanski, have a second?
Second.
Uh, Donahue, Mr. Donahue, questions?
Question is that the second page of this shows that they have a food truck. Timothy, you might want to take note. Is it Timothy? Jordan, I'm sorry. I was reading Timothy's, the first name on there. So you're Jordan, okay, Mark. Okay, so they're gonna have a food truck. Is that gonna be part of it?
Yes, it will be parked on the grass across the street behind the wastewater treatment plant. There is ample space.
Okay. So that's part of the same motion, then, that we have a food truck there and approve it, or is that separate?
Uh, you can. That would be part of the entire package. It should be part of the motion.
Okay, thank you.
You want to amend the motion?
Amend the motion to include what Leroy just said.
Concerning the food truck, you would just need a second?
Second.
There we go.
Mr. Donahue, questions? Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to reports from council members. Starting with Mr. Hall.
Uh, I don't know what, I do have one thing. Quite a few years ago, Leroy, we had this discussed, or there was discussion about a particular piece of land and a, uh, dog park. And whatever happened, I know the piece of land that we were using, and I know it was ownership at that particular time, but is there any thought or maybe thought of consideration of doing, doing that or looking into?
I have never actively pursued creating a dog park. Uh, I'm not opposed to it, but it's not high on my priority list.
Who cleans that up?
The people who are at the park are supposed to be responsible for it.
Yeah, granted, I was over in Allen Township's neighborhood the other day with my dog, and, like, my son's dog. And it, it was there, and I'm not saying that there isn't areas, and I can talk to some of the public works guys or something there, but it always seems to be rather clean. Um, you know the area that they were originally talking, Leroy, that they, at one time they talked, across from Keeney, across from, the, the piece that was owned by two properties along the, along the cr- on Smith Lane, just past the parking lot. Part of that was a borough property and part of it.
Oh, out.
Out here.
Out the back here.
I mean, that was just one area that had been kicked around at that time. Now, whether there's another area that might be feasible, or if it's even thought, or just maybe nobody thinks it's a good idea, or whatever. I mean, yeah, it's more work.
I, I don't know. I, you know, if you want to re-investigate that, I'm, uh, you know, I'd be open to discussion, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll figure what she would, she would involve. That's all I got.
Mr. Stone?
Yes, thank you. Uh, the street fair was, uh, a great success. Uh, weather was fantastic, the vendors were good. Uh, food was great, it was a great time, right, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, it was well attended. Uh, 27 child IDs, one of them happened to be my daughter, so she was thrilled about that, so. Thank you, chief, and, uh, for the police department for taking care of that. Uh, that's all I have. End of report.
Ms. Holdeman?
Thank you. I was, you stole my thunder. I was also gonna compliment everybody on the street fair. It was a really nice time and well attended, and again, great weather, a couple of bees, but, you know, we, we. Couple of bees, but you know, we, we all end up duck and bob, so duck and weave, duck and weave. Um, I'm curious, Leroy, where are we at with, um, the security camera grant and putting that out for bid?
Uh, we are very close to that.
But it's, it's not out yet?
It's not out yet, no.
Okay. How well did we do this summer with, um, lack of vandalism? I didn't hear a lot of hot topic about it.
Um.
So am I assuming no news was good news?
It was sporadic, but at times violent.
Okay.
Uh, you know, the sinks over here, uh, they must be, somebody must have, uh,
Superhuman strength.
A contract on them, because they, they end up smashing sinks over here like nobody's business.
Okay.
Uh, as a matter of fact, when, later on in my report, when, uh, when we construct the new welcome center, it's gonna be all stainless steel.
Right, right. We talked, yeah, okay, okay. Alright, so, um, that was my only question, and I think that's it for me tonight, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything else to say?
I have spoken. Thank you for the time.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Miss Alman?
Thank you. So I didn't have anything, but now that you mentioned the dog park, park and some property, and I'm not against the dog park at all, but I'm looking for property for our fire department's training. So how big is this property and?
It's not big enough for a building like that.
No, okay.
It's just a narrow strip along Smith Lane between there and Crick. I mean, I don't even know if it's even big enough to do that.
May I add to that? That I did meet with Sheila Horwith, uh, she reviewed land available, and there's really nothing available from her standpoint with Horwith's property for the borough, so she sends her regrets.
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue?
Uh, since I missed last time's meeting, I'd like to welcome Mason. Looking forward to working with you. Uh, I'd like to welcome, uh, thank Brian for his job on the newsletter. That was great. I see the month of August, we're down to thirteen weed complaints. That's a positive. Uh, Leroy, is there a timetable when great western's gonna be done? I know.
Good one. Yeah, when they're finished.
Okay, that's what I figured as much.
No, I, I do not know. They're all over the place.
I mean, they're dirty enough plate off of ten to main every day, on off, on off.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I have the left lane closed and, uh,
Yeah, okay.
I avoid the whole territory. I, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to make light of it, but, uh,
Yeah, I know.
It, it's at a point now where.
Yeah, it's.
Flappable.
Yeah, you're right.
You can't do, you can't.
Uh, Republic Services, can we send them a letter? Like when they drop stuff out of recycling bins, can we pick them up?
Oh, we're on them like a cheap suit.
Yeah, send them another one, 'cause, uh.
Where did this happen?
Front of my house.
Okay, on Store Street?
Yeah, Store Street, two houses, mine and the neighbor's. And, uh, sent, he sent code enforcement a letter on one twelve West Seventeenth Street. It's no longer a weed in the sidewalk, it's a bush.
One twelve West Seventeenth. I put a star by that one.
Oh, yeah, there's one, there's a tree growing out of one on Main, uh, sixteen hundred block.
It's the old Don's Barker shop.
Yeah, it's no longer a weed, it's a tree.
Where Don Lovelace was.
Oh, my gosh, that one.
Yeah.
Her old shop, across from the Ginza.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a big bush coming out of the sidewalk there.
Out of the wall.
Yeah.
Where Ginza used to be.
Yes, right next door, correct, yes.
Yeah, that one.
Let's speak in terms you would know.
Yeah, I don't forget my old guy.
And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Mr. Blassey?
Thank you. Uh, a couple things. Yeah, there are more steel plates on Ten Street than there are in McAdam. Um, I hope that we keep on going after them and as much as you can, but I know I've stopped down and asked them, what's the progress, and they don't even know who their supervisor is to get to me or talk to them, so, you know. I get the same story. It's, it's not my circus, it's not my monkey, and it's like, yeah, it is, it's our town, and you're pretty much destroying it. Um, sidewalk Leroy on five eighty-one East Ten Street, the sidewalk is still there. Can we find any? I know the bur, the Greg Mori was up and took pictures of it to send to PPL. Is that being?
And Brian was working on it also.
Thank you.
And we are, we are still pursuing it, however, we have not yet, uh, achieved our end result.
Well, I ask you, if we, if we can do it, we can bill them, and they'll pay it for, pay us for it. If that's something that we have to do, and get somebody to put a sidewalk in there, throw concrete on, and then send them a bill for it, and we can report it to the community through our live streaming that PPL can't do a store, you know, can't fix a sidewalk that they ripped up a year and a half ago, and you use social media for our advantage if we have to.
What I ought to do is file a complaint with the Public Utilities Commission.
There you go.
That's how we got the, that's how we got the railroad tracks fixed on Twenty-first Street.
There you go. Uh, first of all, I, I'm sorry I missed this. This should've been my first note. Thank you, Madam President, for your thoughtfulness about the loss of life that we had, and Leroy, my condolences to your family and to you personally.
Thank you.
Great, great question, Mason. I thought that was fantastic. You stepped up right off the first bat, so you're really raising the bar and keep on moving it forward. Um, to the chief, um, speeding on Ten Street now that the cooler weather has, I seem like I open my windows a little bit, and I can hear the races coming down through from approximately about four A M. Through about six. It slows down at six o'clock, they stop at the stop signs and stuff, but it does seem like it's really picked up, you know? And again, we're gonna have that as you open your windows and hear more than you did when they're closed. Uh, crosswalk patrol, was there, this is more of a question, was there a crosswalk patrol that we had going on?
There was, uh, yeah, a, a detail we did have, yes.
You did, okay. Can you, can maybe just share me a little bit, what was that about?
Well, what happens is, uh, we work together with Penn, uh, Bethlehem Department of Health, and officers from the municipalities, and they set up an operation at crosswalk with, uh, I wanna say fake pedestrians, but they simulate pedestrians and see if people stop, if they want to get a citation.
Okay, yeah. Well, I know there's three sides to every story, so I heard two of them, and usually the truth lies in the middle, so thank you for your explanation of that. So, 'cause I've heard some calls to me, so if anybody else heard about it, at least you know, I didn't know about it, but I'm, not that you're gonna tell somebody and say, oh, we're gonna do a speed trap today, or we're gonna do a pedestrian crossing, but at least I know what it's about. Thank you. Um, and that's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lipsansky?
Thank you, man. Uh, I would like to just say, good meeting, Greg. A lot of information got across. I think it was known, but not collectively as a whole. Individuals may have known segments, but that kinda like blew the fog away. There's a lot of issues that people don't even realize you have to deal with. And I myself have never gotten a complaint about the road crew, the people, them doing something or not doing something. So I take it with that grain of salt that says they are well-supervised and getting skilled with the training to know what needs to be done. Good job. The fire department, again, our fire department, I think, is the best in the county, if not two or three neighboring counties. They do a hell of a job. They know what they're doing, and they get it done. The ambulance services, they do what they need to do also. I would like to possibly give them a higher stipend with their gas to show our appreciation of them being in our borough, uh, because, uh, you never know. There can come a day when someone else outside may dangle a carrot, and it might not be easy to resist it, and they will move. That's what I think we need to look at, keeping our service organizations satisfied. I spoke with Mr. Hall a week or so ago about people involved with fire police. I was involved with the fire police, I would have to say near the inception of it, 'cause I remember training most of all the guys. Now, most all of the guys that I have trained are now gone. Uh, if we know anyone who would be interested between the ages of eighteen and forty, give them a call. We need help. It's a situation where, if you think you wanna tell people what to do, here's your chance to wear the shoes. You're gonna find out one thing. It's either not gonna be what you thought it was, and you don't want anything to do with it, or you're gonna create a good situation with the community and the people driving. God bless you. It's a calling. I'm glad mine is done. So, on a whole, as I have always said for, for many, many years, we have the best EMS system, service branches, police department, fire department in the valley. I would like to get our numbers higher, because we're at the point where we are expanding. Our neighbors to the north, they are expanding at a rate they never expected. I think there may come some times where we may possibly be able to make some type of offers for assistance with the township, because they are growing by leaps and bounds. I believe they're gonna have a population of at least fifteen to seventeen thousand people very shortly. Because once those cabanas get built and populated, uh, there's a lot of things that that brings. Traffic, fires, accidents, police reports, crime. They are not set up to deal with it. We have a, a fairly good idea of what to do, and I have all the confidence in the world in our people who run our departments. The chief, Mr. Mori, the fire police, Mr. Hall, the ambulance corps. We got a hell of a good system here. We have a hell of a borough. Should be proud of it. If you're proud of it, one thing should put a little salt on your flavor, become part of it. Whether it's a volunteer in some type of club, some kind of function, get involved. The exchange club, their members are aging. They need younger members. They need members from the community. You see what they do. I think the average age of the membership of the exchange club is probably seventy-six. They are aging. They are old. They need help. It's sometimes easier to pass along information and train people than it is to find people and put them in that place and make sure that they get trained. 'Cause one day, again, those organizations are gonna become sort of like smoke. They're going to disappear, and everybody's gonna say, why can't we do this? We, we used to. Yeah, we used to when people were interested. If people aren't interested, and they only care about that little slug that sits behind the steering wheel or sits by the T V and watches what goes on and doesn't care to participate, it's a shame. And I think a lot more organizations could use the help, but I am concerned with the help that we need in our borough to make it function and move along and look as good as we do. Uh, again, I will repeat myself. Mayor Prestash, kudos, kudos by the thousands for what you have done for this town. It looks like we have been invaded by placards. It's really nice to see the flags of honor along all of our streets. And I, I think people, people enjoy that. Like, we were just talking a little while ago. Leroy knows, and, and I know, we, we knew ninety percent of the people on those flags. How many people today know any of those flags? You can walk one block, and you would probably say, wow, if it wouldn't be for that picture, I wouldn't know them. But we have that out on display for everybody, and it is one hell of a program. It was a diamond in the jam. Congratulations on that.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Much appreciated.
And, uh, according to my sheet that I have filled out with numerous questions, I see by the clock it's time to yield back time to the chair.
Come on, Tony. Okay. Well, thank you for that. Um, I do have a question. It, I, I forgot about, but did you check East Eighteenth and Lawbuck Ave?
I did. I spoke with, uh, Public Works and Public Board, we're gonna, uh, he's going to, uh, there's two signs that I believe need to be freshened up, and then the yellow marks, the yellow curving, two of the signs to be painted, then it's gonna require a consultation with Leroy and maybe a possible future decision by council if we have to go any further as far as extending in the parking zone.
Okay, 'cause it's really tight there.
I know, I know.
If, if I may, Your Honor.
While your patrols are out, Brian, if they could make a, kind of like a note of sidewalks, curvings, walls, alleys, holes in the street, which they got repaired up there, you can't drive into that telephone pole that was in the middle of the alley, because they fixed it. Wow!
Okay.
You know, and that way we could have a, a, a more comprehensive list, 'cause your, your people are out there all the time.
We forgot Mason.
No, we didn't.
No.
You did.
She's taking us down that rabbit hole with her.
Mason?
Um, I would just like to say I have gotten responses back from Volunteer Club. They'd be very happy to help. I'm just looking for a list of like upcoming borough events. They're very, they're looking forward to like the publicity to see like our students are out volunteering in the world.
Very nice.
That's great, Mason.
And also I would.
Very good.
Also, I'd like to, um, wish my, uh, give my condolences to Leroy's family. Very sorry for your loss.
Thank you. Suggestion, Mason. You can have your art clubs take their pictures and go to the various businesses and ask them if they could put them on display. As you know, Taylor's Coffee House does that, and I'll tell you what, we have some talented kids in this borough.
Thank you. Announcements?
Oops, there we go. Uh, we met with Chris Stanford and Michael Baker, uh, yesterday afternoon, and this is in regard to the welcome center. They are going to be preparing, uh, uh, some suggestions, and they're having the property surveyed, so we know where we can fit the building. Uh, we have eighty thousand dollars from, uh, the county D E P and, uh,
Not yet.
Not yet, but we're working on another one of a hundred thousand dollars. That should, uh, fit very nicely. Uh, the bids for the Twenty-first Street pump station were opened yesterday. They are still under review by the engineer, and following that, we will turn them over to the solicitor to take a look at. But there are two contracts. The electric contract, uh, is ninety-four thousand dollars, and the general contract is five hundred and seventy-one thousand. Those are the lowest bids. So combined, the project should be six hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. We can, we can wrangle that into next year's budget. The Act five thirty-seven, we have been responding to questions from D E P and the Delaware River Basin Authority as part of the process, and that is an ongoing, uh, thing. And lastly, I would like to thank everyone. It seems everyone in the whole world knew who my wife was, and, uh, we had a four and a half hour viewing, and the outpouring of support has been tremendous. It has made my life much more bearable to know that she meant so much to so many people, and I wanna thank everybody for that. That's it.
That's it?
Madam President?
Oh, he's supposed to say something else.
Would we be able to, uh, pay the bills?
I have a motion by Mr. Lipsansky to pay the bills. Donahue's second, by Miss Alman. Question?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Blassey.
I gotta get my list now.
I have a couple things. Leroy, on the budget sheet, we have not had electronic, uh, disposal in a couple years, right?
That's correct.
The last two years, we have twenty-five hundred dollars. The last two years, we have twenty-five hundred dollars budgeted for electronic disposal. So, where does, is there any chance that we can get electronic disposal?
We probably could. Uh, I was kinda waiting on the, on the county to
Okay.
come up with that, but the last time they kinda stiffed us.
Okay.
They had one. There's, the, the Hampton County has an electronic recycling event coming up, I thought, at the end of this month at the Community College.
At the Allen Township, they had one last year also.
Isn't, isn't that the hazardous waste one where you have to make an appointment to take it in?
It's that, okay, it's that one, okay. I'm sorry. All right, totally different.
Just to follow up, that we have it on our budget, so we can see if the county can do anything, and we can have electronic depo- disposal.
I mean, make a note.
Because I know there was some notes in our code enforcing that there's TVs and stuff in the alley, so it makes sense that we look for those kinda things.
You ought to see King Street.
Yeah.
How many do we have down there? Lots.
Okay. Okay, uh, some questions about the checks.
Okay.
Do we have a vending machine that we pay for, or do we make money on these vending machines that we fill? Do we fill?
Those are at the recreation center, and we do make money on that.
All right, so where do I find the income that we make? 'Cause we have one that says almost three hundred fifty dollars that we put in for soda from Alberta, and then there was another one that we went over to, um, BJ's, or Sam's, and another four hundred dollars that we fill those. Do we have the income for those?
Yeah, I don't have that information here, but I can get it for you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, because that comes in on a, a separate income account line, and I can get a printout of that.
Yeah, just see what we make on them, and how much we're putting in, and how much we make on them.
I gotta make a note on that one, too.
Uh, Jack Frost Parade, we, we are paying for the Allen Town hubbo band?
Yep, we always pay for two or three bands. We budget like sixteen hundred dollars.
Does the exchange club pay for that?
They take care of other ones.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know that. Good to know. Um, EM Kurtz for a Freightliner hydro pump, a five thousand dollar bill?
Yeah, that, that's one on one of our aging trucks. That, uh, we, we usually charge most of the accounts off to the four thirty-eight account, which is Public Works Highways. This one was charged off to the sewer, because that truck is used primarily when we do sewer jobs.
Oh, that's a, that's not a fire truck, then?
No, no.
Okay.
No, that's a dump truck.
I seen hydro pumps, I didn't know that was a, then the Fireflow Service of forty-eight ninety-six at the bottom of page one, what was that for?
Uh, that's, uh, testing on the hoses.
Okay.
That we have to do every year.
Thank you.
That is a budgeted item. I think it ran a little bit over.
Leaving out, how much do boots cost for, in Public Works? Maybe Mr. Mori can explain to me. How much is, how much do boots cost?
Uh, the boots I wear are two hundred fifty dollars.
Okay, then, that's understandable why it's two sixty on the budget. I just thought two hundred sixty dollars for a pair of boots is, okay. Didn't realize that.
Two hundred bucks. How about it?
I totally agree. I just didn't know that was just something I thought that number stood out.
Yeah, they can accumulate up to six hundred dollars in the agreement, and nobody is at risk.
Okay.
They all have.
Steel-toed and all the safety and stuff, okay.
Okay.
And then, that was the last thing I wanted. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to comment, we didn't pay a sludge bill this month, 'cause I looked for that. That's the one, that, we, so there was just none in this month?
What?
The sludge removal.
Nope. Didn't hit this two-week period.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.
Most of you are adjourned.
About Mr. Hall?
Second.
About Mr. Donahue? Question?
One question, Leroy. Is this a zoning meeting that they had on our notes? Is that just the upcoming meeting or the other?
I didn't even get a copy of that. Can I see it, please?
Yes.
All right, I have one, I have one.
It's for an apartment complex?
Uh, yeah, it'll be on October twelfth, seven o'clock here.
Here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this mine?
So, question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
There you go.
That's pretty sick.